Okay, I think we are ready to go. So Nick, okay from your... Okay. Got the thumbs up from both sides, Dr. Shitt, so I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome, thank you for joining us this evening, those who are here and those who might be watching us live stream. This is a regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees for Bartholomew Consolidated School Corporation, meeting on Monday, January 25th. So it is a most dreary evening, and I'm just so very nice for those of you who are joining us. We start each of our meetings with reflections from one of our colleagues, and tonight we will hear from Mr. Stener.
Thank you, Dr. Shitt. For my reflections this evening, I'm going to share a column from The Republic that was published yesterday, Sunday, the 24th, and legitimacy of our democratic institutions, including the Congress. It is obvious that many people in this country do not trust the system, are willing to believe lies and misinformation, and will turn to violence and to radical ideologies. That loss of confidence in American institutions is very dangerous for our democracy. America is a beacon of freedom and a citadel of liberty, and our friends and allies have been surprised and disappointed at the events of recent days. Our adversaries are persuaded that our system is broken. So this is the challenge that is ahead of us, to use our democratic institutions and processes to make the country work better for all people. The insurrection at the Capitol was a dark moment in our history, but we should see it as an opportunity to revitalize our democracy. We've done this in years past, scores if not hundreds of times. We can do it again. And he signed his column, Lee Hamilton. One of the lines in the column goes over and over in my head. It was Congressman Hamilton's call to action. He wrote, "This is the challenge that is ahead of us, to use our democratic institutions and processes to make the country work better for all people." When I think about that call to action, I think about the role of a free and public education in our democracy. We've all seen the videos and photos. I would assume that most of the angry insurrectionists are products of public schools from somewhere across our nation. How did they fail to learn truth from lies, right from wrong, how to make up their own minds? To preserve our democracy, we have to do better. We, in this school corporation, are one of the democratic institutions that Congressman Hamilton is calling on to make the country work better for all people. Just as we pledge allegiance to the flag tonight, let's also pledge ourselves to answer Congressman Hamilton's call to action with the work we do to fulfill our vision, our mission, and our high expectation objectives. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stener, and those who are able, if you will stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. All right, so here in our meeting space in the administration building, I have five of my colleagues, as well as Ms. DeHoftwire is on Zoom, so we have a full house here in our school, in our board, so I'll call this meeting to order. We are to be reminded, as always, as to our mission and the vision of our school corporation, as well as a listing behind me, and that we also always review our high expectation objectives, which guide the decision-making that we do each meeting time. All right, so we are to the who and why of our meeting agenda, and the first, we'll have an update on our COVID plan from Dr. Roberts.
Dr. Shitt, and I pledge, this is going to be the shortest COVID-19 plan update I've given all year.
Really, so it's just ditto?
Yes.[325.58][325.58](laughing) So as we now get into the, I guess, last week of January, at the last board meeting, I indicated where we were currently, and that is still the case, five days of in-person learning for elementary students and a hybrid model for our secondary students. And I mentioned at that last meeting that we would continue to review community spread of COVID-19, and our best-case scenario, we would be returning secondary students to five days of in-person instruction sooner rather than later. Our first determination of trying to do that was last Thursday, or I guess two Thursdays ago, January 14th, after that last board meeting. So that time has passed. We were not able to bring students back, or at least made the choice not to, and they have remained in hybrid. So our next opportunity to review is this Thursday, January 28th. So we'll have additional conversations. We continue regularly to have conversations with Dr. Nebolski and the Bartholomew County Health Department, as well as the officials at CRH, Columbus Regional Health. We will continue to look at the data that we have available to us, and on Thursday, we'll communicate with the public as to where we stand for next week. So if we would make the decision to change on Thursday and bring secondary students back into the building for five days, every day of the week, in-person instruction, that would start on Monday, February the 1st. So that is our situation now. We'll communicate to the public where we are next Thursday. This slide is always on there in terms of what our responsibilities are based upon spread within the community. This map is of the state of Indiana and is the most recent one. Comes from last week, we were at a 2.5. Those who follow this map pretty closely will note that it is much less red than it has been in the past, so that's a good thing. Perhaps the state is going in the right direction with numbers of cases. As we look at our numbers for this week, per capita rates continue to go down, the positive test rate has continued to go down, the hospitalizations at CRH have continued to go down, so everything trending in the right direction, and we think that we'll be at a 2.0 most likely when the numbers are crunched for Wednesday. So just a forecast for us in terms of at least the numbers that we look at that match up with the state. We'll see if that is the case. This, we put in front of you all the time as well, this was the second grouping of recommendations in terms of instructional model options and extracurriculars based upon color designations of the counties. And then this last slide for COVID-19 is just where we stand today with number of cases. So since Monday, August the 10th, 469 positive test cases now. You can see that is 279 students, 141 support staff members, and 49 teachers, or 2%, 12% and 6% of the groups that they make up. So that's not a total. It would be 49 teachers means 6% of our certified staff members have tested positive. I always put this in here in terms of just that quick change that happened. October 2nd was the Friday leading into fall break, we had 29 positive test cases. By the end of that month, we had 82, and since that time, we've had 387. That makes an average per week of 32, and that average per week is going down. It's been as high as 40 since that end of October, so we are now down to 32, and hopefully that will continue to go down. And it is those kinds of things that we look at to try to make the decision as to whether or not we can bring our secondary students back, get back to normal as much as we possibly can. And I state that, though, recognizing that it has been nice to have physical distancing all the time. We have appropriate physical distancing in our secondary schools with this particular model, that's why we went to it, but we will, again, look at situations and scenarios, see how comfortable we are, and make a determination by or on Thursday of this week.
All right, thank you. Are there questions that any of my colleagues have?
Yeah, I'd like just one, and I tried to ask this a couple weeks ago, and I think I worded it poorly, but in terms of the hybrid at the secondary level, in terms of the number of kids being identified through contact tracing with the hybrid, I would assume that's a pretty significant difference as before when all were present.
It is, Todd, and I think the last time that you asked it, I interpreted it as to kids who had become positive because of being in contact, the number of close contacts, regardless of whether they are positive or not, small. At the secondary level before, we had numbers in the 40s sometime, based upon a student being in a class, and four people around that student were close contacts in the next class, and the next class, and the next class, and lunch, and a school bus, and maybe a team. That number, Kelly helped me out, it's been maybe the highest number we've had is around 10 or 11 with close contacts since we've been back in school with the secondary schools. So cut that in, you know, down to, from 40 to 10 at the most in those cases.
That's an excellent point, thank you. Are there other questions that you all have?
So what do you think accounts for the switch in the colors in the state map?
Yeah, it's always tough to guess, but I think that we are getting to the end of the timeframes where we were all together. So from Thanksgiving break and then winter break, Christmas break, as we come out of that, and there may be, we may have been together a lot based upon circumstances, situations, and choices we all made, and COVID-19 may have spread some at that point in time, and now we've gotten separation from that. Winter break is now, this is week four for us to be back, I believe, and so I think that's a large part of it, and that's probably true throughout the state and throughout the country. That's our hope, that with increased vaccinations, I know we're not where we would like to be. Our county is working as hard as they can based upon the dosages they get to get those into arms as fast as they can, but the more people we get vaccinated, we get closer to the end of winter, and maybe can get outside a little bit more, hopefully we'll see those numbers continue to go down through the next couple of months.
Dr. Everett, since you mentioned vaccinations, what is the status of vaccinations for teachers in our?
Great question, Nick. It's something we continue to ask about too, but also understand and appreciate where the county is, and the county is following the directives of the state of Indiana with the age groupings. And so right now, it's 65 and over. Have we dropped to 65 yet? Okay, still 70-plus. So the state is trying to hit that most at-risk population first, besides the first responders or people caring for individuals from a health standpoint, and there are not enough dosages right now to drop. I asked that question because it was supposed to be 80s, 70s, and 60s. We have not had enough dosages in a state to get the 60s taken care of, and so they are committed, I think the State Department of Health, the Governor's Office, to getting the older population vaccinated before they get to us or get to our teachers, our staff. So we're still waiting for that to be the case. I know, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, Kelly and her team are already, and we're blessed to have nurses in every one of our buildings, already many of them are volunteering here locally to go out and give the vaccinations to our county residents. And so as soon as the dosages are made available to us, we'll start administering those even in the school, schools themselves. So, but we're still, we're still days, if not months, away from that. Kelly, any additional information there? Okay.
All right, thank you very much for the update.
You're welcome.
Next on our list is a presentation about C4's virtual open house, and I'll turn to Dr. Gene Hack.
Thank you, Dr. Shitt and Gene, welcome. Dr. Hack, we wanted to extend this opportunity for Dr. Hack to present tonight because we are all doing things differently, right? So C4 typically has an open house coming up where people come in and check some really cool things out, and just not quite able to do it that, this year, and so, Dr. Hack, take us through what a virtual open house might be like.
Thank you this evening, Dr. Shitt and board and Dr. Roberts for this opportunity. If you know me, you know that I will take any opportunity presented to present C4 and the wonderful things that our staff and students do. And a little bit, I got a, I'm supposed to have 10 minutes, but I'm glad Dr. Roberts decided to take a little bit of short time on the COVID review, and good news, because I probably won't.[889.13][889.13](laughter) But we'll see what we can do. So I have a few slides I want to run through, but this is the date of our virtual open house, and it will be live from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., so you'll be able to do it, and we'll show you a little bit of preview of some of those activities today here in a minute as well, but I want to go through and talk a little bit about the why and what we do with C4 and everything. And so when we talk about it, C4 originally started out with the career and technical education, and some of us who are a little bit older in the room might remember it as vocational ed or voc tech or whatever, but, and really, it's a K-12. We approach it at BCSC with a K-12 mindset and thinking about that education at the end is about what we do with that education and how we get there. And some of us stop at 12th and move on and get training in a non-traditional way, and some of us move forward when we get an associate's or bachelor's or PhD, et cetera. But we talk about career exploration all the way through K-12. Fortunately, I know the director of the elementary ed, and we started with that, with talking about that back in the, when I first started my job and she was not in that role, and we started talking about how that would look and exploring with that and finding out the curriculum and the standards across there. Then we also try to provide opportunities for our students. We want to connect all learning to real-life situations, and then we want to support our stakeholder needs in the community and Area 41. What do we do? Well, how do we do that as historical programming? Historically, when I first started teaching, we would do a roadshow, and we would take stuff to all the area schools, we would go to all the middle schools, and we'd set up like a traditional job fair, booths, and activities, and then we'd do it at night, and we'd do it at East and North, and that was prior to CSA. And since in my tenure where we're differently, and we've decided that we host two course fairs, one at East and one at North, and we bring the middle school students to us, and then they get to see the programming in place with our student ambassadors that lead that roadshow. They set up booths and talks and demonstrations as well, but then they also get to tour the activities and also get to tour the facilities and see where we're at. And we've had great positive comments, both from the middle school staff and our staff and students, about how that goes. As Dr. Roberts alluded to, we have new challenges this year, so we've had to think outside the box. You know, originally, we were thinking, okay, we're going to get through this, second semester, we'll all be good, we'll be back face-to-face. Well, that's not the case. So we started talking about what we needed to do and think about it. Be honest, I started thinking about and worrying about this last March. Once we started this stuff, I'm like, oh my, what's going to happen, especially when we started seeing Indianapolis schools change or close. And then we talked about what's at future opportunities, really being positive about what it's done. And so we've been able to come up with a thing that we think is, well, actually, we're pretty proud of what we have so far. Josh Burnett and I were talking today and considering the time limit and the amount of work and everything that's happening, pretty proud of what we've come up with. So how are we doing? Well, thank goodness for partnerships. We're all about connections and working through that, both in the community, both within schools, and both within my state organizations. So working with some of my state directors came up and we found a media place called Ash Media, and they've been able to work with us and help do this, and they've done the backside of a lot of the workforce. So that's been good, and we'll show you there. Our past best practices, we actually took what we did in person, and we've tried to replicate that as much as we can in the virtual world, because that's been very, very successful. And if you know me, I'm a handshake kind of guy, and this mask stuff and staying six foot out, touching elbows and chicken winging it, just isn't quite up to par, and so we need to be able to do it, so we're trying to do as best we can. We came up with a plan of action, the team and I, and we've moved forward, and we've got a positive mindset about what this is going to look like, not only for today, but how it changes us for in the future and what we're looking at, how we can use it in the future to do that as well. So we're really excited about the different opportunities. So now, I'd like to go and give you a quick tour of some of the activities that we have in place. Now, everybody understand, this is still in progress. This is not open to the public, although you're going to get a tour of it. If you see something misspelled or out of place, or it's one thing or another, it's not, we're working on through that as you can, every day we find something else we need to change, update, or do. So here we go, if I can remember how to do this. Nick, I'm supposed to, what, get out of presentation?
In show.
In show.
Yeah.
And then I think it's this one. So this will be the opening of where we're at. We're in the process of redoing our video here. I'd play it, but it's got some pretty annoying music over the top right now, so we're not going to do that. So it will go through, and they're updating that and doing that, but as you come in, there'll be a link, and you'll come through here, and you can come in and look at resources. Come on. Internet connected? All right, I swear this all worked before the meeting. Must have timed down. All right. So what we've done is we've secured this so that when we look at it, there has to be a password so that it's not open to the public, and apparently, we had a timeout issue here. We've not really been on it this inactive for a while, so I apologize.
Can I ask you a question while they're doing that?
Yeah, please do, please.
Are you going to be able, so we talk about the four counties, will this actually expand your opportunity to promote this to the other three counties that are part of C4?
Yeah, so part of it, and we'll finish up, we can move forward while we're doing it, part of what we're doing is publicity issue as well. So we have mailed mailers, each of you have a mailer in front of you and a brochure, so the postcards have went out already. We'll walk you through this real quick, I'm going to go back a minute to home. So as you come in here, students will be able to do this. We've also generated an assignment or activity for our eighth grader students that will work next Wednesday for their course fair, and they'll have to go through here, and we're working with the middle school staff and stuff, and that'll be one of their assignments, whether we're virtual, or in my case, hopefully, we'll be back in person on secondary for, on Wednesday. But as you go through, if we go to resources, you have an FAQ, different things, but you can also meet some different pieces. So one of the things we can do, we've gotten some former student testimonials. Jesus is one of our former students.
Hello, my name is Jesus Palmino, and I came here to share about my experience in C4. So I started C4 actually my freshman year.
And I'd let that go, but I'll let you, there's a lot more I want to show, but Jesus started in engineering, found out he didn't like it, ended up in dental. He is one of our ambassadors, he's worked for Dr. Reinhardt here in school, he's finished his associate degree at ID Tech, and now he's enrolled at IU Med, or IU PUI, and then he'll finish dental school. So that's one of his, and then we've got a couple others that we'll scroll through that you can do, and so we're putting different ones. Unfortunately, when we video ourselves, sometimes we catch ourselves when it pauses and we don't, we don't present ourselves as well, but that's where that comes. So they'll be able to hear that. We also have parent testimonials. So they'll be able, parents can visit those and check with those, and students as well, and listen to those and see what they have to come up with. And then as we go through, you can also check out different courses and see what's available to you. You can also visit and see what's offered if you're a freshman, incoming freshman, what will line up for you and what you need to do, different stats, how many dual credits we give, how many students we serve, et cetera. But if we go back to home, and I'm happy to take, we go to staff, we visit our bus drivers, we're still waiting on J.R. Owens, we've got a picture of him in his train conductor outfit that he does during Christmas, but he wanted a different one. I've got a little bit of lag here today with this, so I apologize. You can meet our counselor, there's a message from myself, the assistant, you can see our support staff. I got to give a shout-out to Sarah King, Annie Fiesbeck, Mark Dab, Autumn and Linda, they've really been carrying the load on getting this up and going and getting all the work and some support that we need. Sarah's been doing all the staff videos, Annie's been getting all the student videos that you'll see here in a minute, and then Autumn's been managing a lot of it as well and managing it through. Sandy Kent's our new print shop and graphic design support, and she's one that's responsible for the different graphics and stuff you're seeing in front of you and helping us out as well. And now, let's get to the meat of it. There we go. So if we come in here, seems like there's a delay in working, but let me pull up architecture. So you'll see this for each of the programs. You'll see a video from the teacher, you'll see a video from the student, a current student.
Hi, my name is Ashawn Metta, I go to Columbus North, and I'm in the C4 Architecture class, and I'm taking this class because I want to do architecture as a career, and...
I might need you to escape for me, Dr. Roberts, I apologize, to minimize that. They can come in here and see the courses that they'll hit, they can see the course guide, and then they'll be able during the day, students will have a Zoom link, so our ambassadors will be doing live ambassador meetings with our eighth graders and students, and then in the evening, we'll have another Zoom link for our parents and staff that will meet with our teachers and our ambassadors. Then if we go back to home again, go into our program directory, I want to show, let's go to radio and TV, because I think I'm running out of time. Each of those, once again, we have two instructors, two instructor videos, a couple of student ambassador videos, but we also have gone and we've gotten these 360 videos, so we can go through, and we're showing, this is the studio over at East, but then I can also move around in 360 through it and see and look what that looks like, see the green screen, et cetera, and then move through those other programming as well. So if I minimize that, they can do that. Once again, they can do learn more, they can find out, go to our webpage, learn out what classes and teachers were there, and then we can get back on that piece. So the opportunity for the students to really find out more examples of what they're doing and what they can see and stuff is doing, I feel very optimistic about what we've gotten put in place and what we hopefully will be able to do, and then how we can use this in the future. So with that, I'm able to take any questions or answers or whatever, or hopefully do what we need to do, but we plan on using this with our sixth-grade tours this year as well, because we have all those, and I mentioned that that started 10 years ago with Mrs. Lautner from Smith Elementary, is the student services director over there, and saying we need to help get students understanding what careers are and what that is, and we kind of built upon it, and we started with one sixth-grade group, and now we have all 11 elementaries and a couple parochial schools, and then we have some other schools from the area coming during their eighth-grade year, doing this same kind of scenario. We started with about 2,400 students 10 years ago, and we have over 3,000 this year. So we are the largest school inside of BCSC, plus our area schools, so about 3,400 total. Happy to answer any questions or comments or entertain or sit down and, as needed, but I hope you'll visit us, I hope you'll visit us on Wednesday night and tour, you'll be able to Zoom into any of the meetings. If we reach 100, you'll just need to move to the next one and come back and meet with the teacher and the students then at that time as well, because they are set at 100 limit.
Wow.
That's a great website, very engaging, like well organized, and I mean, really, really nice job with all the content. I don't know a lot about it, so I'm going to ask some really basic questions, if that's okay.
Please do.
Which of your programs are like the highest enrollment rate?
Probably our highest enrollment right now would be our biomedical with, we have three, four teachers in there, depending on how we do it, but we have a little over 450 students in there, I believe, right now, just in that one.
Okay.
And then we've, you know, it's fun watching some of these student videos and what they do and stuff, but I won't play them right now. And I can share the link and the password with the board, just don't let it out yet as we move it forward. The general public will be open on Wednesday.
It's a great program, Mr. Hack, I've enjoyed attending the C4s in the past.
Yeah, we really are disappointed that we don't have, you know, you know me well enough to know what we do and how we do it, but we're, like I said, we're very optimistic of how this is, and we've already started thinking how we use this tool to engage and reinforce the activities that we have in place already. So we'll have this for a year under our current contract, and then it'll do updates for us as well, and then we can renew if we need be as well. So we've been very, very fortunate with what we've had and where we're at, and the people we're working with are excellent, and Josh has met with them and talked with them, and you know, I trust him, and he's given an A-OK as well.
Awesome. Yes, Mrs. Stener.
Dr. Hack, can you remind us how this works? You mentioned a number of outside-school corporations to have students come here and attend C4 classes. Can you tell us how that works in terms of funding, transportation, logistics? How do we work through all that?
Well, that's part of my job, but yes, but basically, we have an agreement with, and the state is divided into career centers or areas. We're Area 41, so we have Bartholomew County, part of Jackson County, part of Brown County, and then part of Edinburgh. So there's schools that come to us from those schools, and then they'll pay a tuition reimbursement. Typically, they come to us what we would call our multi-hour programs, so that they'll be here for multiple hours or multiple credits during the day. be here for multiple hours or multiple credits during the day. Of the, we have about 3,000 BCSE students, and that includes all one-hour programming as well, so our, what would traditionally be industrial arts, it's called technology education, our fax classes, our business classes, and there's one more, I'm forgetting in the one-hour program, oh, the Project Lead the Way engineering classes. Most of those high schools have some sort of those one-hour programs, so they would have those in those high schools. And then they'll send their students to the area school for machine trades, nursing, et cetera. And then there's a tuition. They provide transportation back and forth. Sometimes the students will drive. Hauser lets some of their students drive because they're within the county. Decatur County lets a few of their students drive, depending on. As you know, we've been in class the whole time, and we've had students that were allowed to drive when their buses weren't being provided. Seymour had, they were on hybrid, and even when they weren't on hybrids, they were providing the buses up here, and students were coming in and coming up on their off days for their careers, career class.
And then a couple on your classes page, a couple of them have that Project Lead the Way as part of their, the course name or the area of study name. Can you describe what that is and how that relates to C4?
Yeah, so Project Lead the Way, there's actually, we do Project Lead the Way at the elementary now, and then there's a Project Lead the Way middle school that we're not doing, and then there's Project Lead the Way at the high school level, and there's biomed, engineering, and computer science. And we do two of the three, the computer science, we started, and we looked at it, and we didn't think we were getting the value of what we needed to for the tuition, or the cost of the programming, and we've kind of done it on our own. And, and speaking of that team, we, we won first place in the state in Cyber Patriots, and we're waiting on some other words, and we'll spread that out, but we got noticed over the weekend, we got first place on that. So that's the project, but what that is, is it's a set curriculum in the engineering and the biomed, and then the students walk through that program with, and then it's a STEM programming. Biomed is typically students who are interested in nursing all the way up to doctors, brain surgeons, as well as they're in the data researcher, even looking at the research and doing lab work.
Thank you.
Very, very impressive.
Well, thank you for, again, for the opportunity, like I said, and at any time anybody wants to come visit us or see us, please do. You know our website, and hopefully we'll see you on Wednesday night at the Career Fair in the open house. And all patrons and everybody is open, and it'll be live Wednesday, and there's mailers you can visit our website, our BCSE website, it's in social media, and all kinds, and newspapers, et cetera.
Awesome. So will you make a point of that you're on the agenda after the third and let us know how it went?
Will do, glad to. Like I said, I can be here every week. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Dr. Roberts, I'm going to let you exit out.
I will do that. Thank you, Dr. Heck.
Were there any other questions people had? I didn't want to cut you short. All right. Awesome.
Okay.
Awesome, awesome. All right. So routinely, we are required to have some information about technology protection and our internet safety. I am going to turn to Mr. Williams to share that information, and then I'll let you do that, then I'll do the gavel thing, and we'll have a public hearing for people who might have questions. We'll answer, Mr. Williams will answer those questions, and then we'll do the gavel thing again. All right.
As a requirement for a participant of the E-Rate program, E-Rate is out of the which is part of the FCC, but it allows schools to receive funding based on their free and reduced populations to help pay for internet connections and internal connections within the building. And we actually get a 60% discount on all of that through this program, so it is vital for our success with technology. Part of the requirements of being an E-Rate participant is to follow the guidelines of SIPA, or the Children's Internet Protection Act, have policy and filtering in place to protect our students. So part of BCSE's compliance is Policy 7540. And we also partner with vendors to create an internet filter that is adjusted daily, essentially, from our teaching staff giving us information, and they work with other schools. Our firewall is also available to help protect students from inappropriate content as well.
All right, thank you for that. So I'm going to do the gavel out thing, so we are not in a school board meeting, we are in a public hearing. And this is an opportunity for people to ask questions about our safety and our, our safety compliance, how we do that, blah, 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 blah. And, Dr. Roberts, we can't see who's zooming if they might have questions.
Sure. Great point. Thank you, Dr. Shit.
Sure.
Got him.
Don't want to leave you out, Ms. DeHoffdoyer. So are there any questions individuals have of us about, or safety compliance? Anyone here? I think we're good. You did a thorough, wonderful job, Mr. Williams. Thank you.
I would just want to commend Nick and his team in our IT department. They've had a lot of extra work to do in trying to make sure that our internet, the internet is as safe as possible for our kids. We've been at it about a year now, in terms of some kind of e-learning that seems like going on on a given day, and they've done an outstanding job. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is done, and we're back in our board meeting. Next on our agenda is opportunity for individuals who might wish to make public comment. We did not have anyone sign in today. So with great excitement, we go to what on our, on our agenda, and we are going to go through the first volume, the first reading volume of our policy revisions.
This is the first reading of these policies. By policy, we go through two readings, and then I asked for your approval during that second reading, so the next opportunity to review these policies will be February 8th, the next board meeting. So there's something that pops up tonight? Yes, go ahead.
Can I just suggest that as we have questions about a policy, would you kind of pop up? Because otherwise, we'll forget.
Yes, yeah, there are, there are a few. I didn't count exactly how many there are here. There are a few. A reminder to all, and maybe new information for Todd and Nikki, is that we have revisions to policies about every six months, as we try to stay on top of the large volume of policies that help guide the operations of our school corporation. We use a company, a vendor called Neola, N-E-O-L-A, and they track all compliance issues, new case law, federal and state legislation changes, just to make sure our policies can keep up. And tonight's recommendations are primarily each of those, some compliance situation, maybe a technical correction. I think there's one that's just a grammatical correction that we've caught. And, or we've had some legislation change, whether it be in Indiana or some federal changes. So I'll jump in, I'll be very brief with each of these, but again, just raise your hand or ask a question as we go through. Policy 1220, employment of the superintendent, that was based upon a situation that occurred in southern Indiana, actually, where some changes were made to a superintendent's contract once new board members had gotten in and before they were able to take office. Some changes were made to that superintendent's contract, and legis, the legislators in the state of Indiana did not like that. And so they have changed that, and the change in this policy is simply, I guess it's in your, in your packet, you have the red line, green additions and so forth, but it is that if you have, in our case, with Todd and Nikki coming on as board members, that with this new legislative change, my contract could not have been revised between, November 3rd, I think, was the date of the election, between that date and the first meeting of this board in January. Only after Todd and Nikki would have taken their seats could then my contract be revised. Again, a very specific situation caused that. That is oftentimes the case with legislation. There's a reason that it gets changed. Policy 2370.02, flex program, this was just a grammatical error. So there was, I think, establish, became established with an ED at the end, and so that's the change, and we're putting that in front of you to make sure we get that corrected and can move on. Policy 2623, student assessment. This is from Senate Enrolled Act, SEA 346, that states, "A student's score on the statewide assessment may not be the primary factor or measure used to determine whether a student is eligible for a particular course or program." So sometimes, you might have a situation where in order for a student to get into this program or this course, they have to have a certain situation, grade or whatever, sometimes schools may have been using the statewide assessment as that primary driver to get into that program or course. That cannot be the primary factor or measure based upon state legislation. Policy 2700 is an annual performance report. Basically, this one allows us to make the amount of information that we have to publish in the newspaper smaller. There is a cost to us publishing in the newspaper, and so this gives us that option. We can continue to publish the entire annual performance report, or we can do a newly described summary report. So in the policy that was given to you, it outlines what we might include in the summary report, the various pieces that we could then share. So again, state statute says we have to publish an annual performance report each year in the newspaper, as well as on our website. They have now given us the ability to shorten that amount, take up less space, cost a little less money. Policy 3220 is about staff evaluation. This is, has been revised, again, based upon Indiana code. It removes the requirement that the student statewide assessment results are an objective measure for evaluating certificated employees. So that assessment may only be used when the results would improve the employee's performance rating. So there were a few changes in last year's legislative session regarding statewide assessments. We've seen the one in terms of a student being chosen for a particular class or course. Another one is in regards to a teacher's evaluation, in that the statewide assessment can only be used if it will improve the rating.
Could I ask about, how will this impact our teacher evaluation?
Hard to say, Dr. Shid, in that our evaluations are good, meaning that the vast majority of our teachers are already scoring at a three or a four. So it then becomes, how many might get a four instead of a three? I don't know at this point in time without seeing what, the, on our rubric right now, the impact of the statewide assessment is pretty small anyway. Minor percents when compared to the entire rubric and what, what all we're looking at, so I don't, I don't think it would change it much. All right. ... of legal settlement and eligibility for enrollment of students without legal settlement in the corporation. Over the last 12 years, 13 years, the state of Indiana has completely changed transfers, and basically, no matter where you live in Indiana, you can go somewhere else, and you don't have to pay tuition. 13 years ago, if you went from Flat Rock, Hall Creek, Hauser, to Columbus, or vice versa, you'd have to pay tuition to do that. You do not now, but corporations, or at least the state allows you to not have to charge that, but corporations are not required to accept transfers. So we, as a school corporation, could say that we do not want to have transfers in our school system, we're just going to close the door. You either make the door wide open, or you close the door. If you close the door, you still have to do this. So the state said, regardless of that, let's say you're not going to take transfer students, you still need to take transfer students as long as there's capacity within your school if you have an employee in your corporation who lives outside your district, makes at least $8,000 a year, and they want them there. Or you have a coach, extracurricular position, makes at least $3,000 a year, so it's probably a head coaching position, and they want their kid to be in your school system, but they live out of district, you have to let them. Again, unless there's a capacity issue, you have too many kids, classrooms are full, et cetera. So this is the one, even the school corporation, there aren't many left in Indiana, there are a few, Munster is one that jumps out to me, that does not, does not take transfers. Most are taking them, but if you're a corporation that does not, you at least have to do this. This is continued, let's see, this is where it takes some of the weight off of your shoulders, which is tough for you to make decisions on individual students, and it gives it to the superintendent, who's actually here every day, to be able to review and evaluate certain circumstances and situations, and potentially revoke, either allow or revoke a transfer situation. So it's transferring the authority to make these decisions to the superintendent if you are willing to do that.
I'll ask real quick, frequency? And I've been on the board a number of years, I don't remember making a decision like this ever.
Yeah, you set policy that has allowed it. This was an interesting one to me, because we have assumed by practice that this was already here, so we are not explicitly stating that, that that is the case, because the volume is high. We get transfer requests daily. It's one, it's two, it's five, but we are getting transfer requests daily now. We start shoving those back, because once we get to, we start a second semester now. So we won't get too many right now for next school year, but as, as the semester goes on, those will start rolling in on a very routine basis. They first go to the building principal, who evaluates the circumstances, signs off, and then passes it to my office. So our practice has been modeling this policy, this addition or denim to the policy. Policy 5130, withdrawal from school, there's a grammatical error here. Policy 5610, suspension and expulsion of students, this was just a revision based upon HEA 1066 about credit. There was a time, and probably when we were all in school, we can remember that, this, maybe you didn't if you didn't get suspended, but if you were suspended or expelled previously, you would not be able to allow or be able to complete work or take tests and get credit for that. It was, it was a significant penalty that if you were suspended from school, you might miss a major test and then fail a class, maybe even the entire class for that semester. And so revisions have been made where if this requires schools to allow suspended students to receive credit for all completed assignments or schoolwork assigned in the same manner as a student who is not suspended. Additionally, this is, okay, I thought there was another continuing piece. All right. Policy 5895 is on student employment, and this just changes some of the inner workings of the work permit. It's now called an employment certificate. So if you read through that, you saw a lot of strikes of work permit, the new word, employment certificate, and also now, we have to identify an issuing officer who meets the requirements of Indiana law, which were listed in the policy. The revisions also address the age range, who must secure an employment certificate, as well as documentation necessary to receive the employment certificate. So just got a little bit more specific in terms of what it took to get that certificate, how it could be maintained, and who in the buildings were issuing that, and it changed even by title to a, an employment certificate issuing officer.
I have a quick question on that, Dr. Roberts. Is the state taking over employment certificates next year?
That has been my understanding, and so as, as this policy was revised, or we looked at SEA 409 and brought this in, I'm not sure how long we're going to actually have to sustain what's in here. And again, sometimes we're six months in backwards in terms of getting these passed. Legislation comes out last year, everything gets, gets put in place, and now we are asking you to approve the policy. But yes, it's supposed to be moving away from us over, over time.
I have to say, I'm still shocked that age 14 is the minimum. They're supposed to be in school.
So you're saying that's too young?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Animals on school corporation property, there are some animals sometimes on our school property, and this is, let's see, reading through this very quickly. So in the policy, it made sure to define for you the kinds of animals that might be allowed to be on school property, so an emotional support animal or a certified therapy dog as examples. And then gave reasons that those animals could be on our property, as well as reasons for us to deny that. And so it may be that we've allowed an emotional support animal, or a certified therapy dog, or even a service dog on our property, but then something happens, and we have to say we can't have that animal on our property anymore. It goes through the process of both granting the request to allow for the animal to be on property, as well as revoking that permission that may have been given. This is one that has an extra page. All right. I know a couple of you were asking about that prior. Again, we have typically certified therapy dogs in our corporation. I say typically, meaning we have some, not a large number. Throughout our buildings in the corporation, very few emotional support animals and/or service dogs, but we have had examples of those in and out of our school. But we have had examples of those in and out of our school buildings over time, based upon student needs and situations. Policy 8400 is on school safety. Yeah, this is where it just requires us to have an MOU in place with a community mental health center established under state law, or a provider certified or licensed by the state. So as we all try to get better at addressing the social and emotional needs of our kids, this was a school safety piece added. And all corporations, as a part of their safety plan, have to have something in place to address social and emotional wellness, including an MOU with a local provider. And we have providers already in place in our school corporation, have had for a while, and have added more individuals and services over the last couple of years through our counseling counts initiative, where at this point in time, we have mental health providers in each one of our school buildings, multiple. Let's see. Is this an additional comment in that regard? Policy 8405 is environmental health and safety issues. I think the only change in this, again, changes to Indiana code, was to provide guidance for the appropriate testing of drinking water in all school buildings. And we actually did this recently voluntarily, tested for lead in all of our buildings, and have rectified any recommendations or situations that may have been mentioned, which were very few, but every single one of our buildings, faucets, spigots, et cetera, have been checked in our school buildings. So I think, Dr. Bozeman, we were talking about this, we would not have to do this again for a few years now, based upon...
Right, we completed that in 2017, so that's satisfied.
Yeah, so prior to January 1, 2023, thank you. Policy 8462, child abuse or neglect, being revised to reflect changes to SEA 295, that a school's social worker and school psychologist are appropriate individuals to provide age-appropriate and research evidence-based instruction on child abuse and child sexual abuse that must be only provided to students in K through 12. So one of those additional things, when we talk about our curriculum and the things that consume a day, there are a lot of things that we are asked to do, and none of them inappropriate. We have kids here, we have social things that go on, who's maybe best to do that, and Mr. Stinner was talking about the important role of public education in his reflections. Here's another example of that, that we provide, child abuse and child sexual abuse instruction to our kids in kindergarten through grade 12 during the school year, and it adds individuals who would be appropriate to deliver that for us. Policy 8600 is transportation. This was revised to provide a new option for transporting students. This is one that is pretty good in terms of being able to use other vehicles or even buses for small numbers of kids. There was a time that basically, if you're going to take one kid across campus, you had to put him in a school bus and take him across campus. This says that you can use an appropriate vehicle, which that wording does refer to things like minivans, and cars, and trucks, and whatever else might be appropriate to transport an individual. So, and if seven or fewer students for that appropriate vehicle, as well as a special purpose bus or school bus could be asked to...
Does it still have to be painted yellow?
It does not have to be painted yellow. So a part of the definition of appropriate removes yellow from that. Policy 8800 is religious/patriotic ceremonies and observances. This was, this policy is revised to reflect HEA 1066, which is about displaying the national motto, "In God We Trust." So HEA 1066 has specific guidelines that we would have to follow if we would choose to display the national motto. It does not require it, but if we choose to, then we would have to display it in a very particular way, and that is outlined specifically in this policy. At this point in time, we do not have the motto in our buildings. Policy 9700, relations with special interest groups. This was an interesting one, and may even be more interesting when you hear the word patriot these days, as we've just have had some interesting stuff that's happened with some of the divisiveness that's occurred in our country pursuant to SEA 398 and a new chapter of Indiana code, patriotic youth membership organizations. So when somebody sees that, they might start going all kinds of places. The policy has been revised to reflect the requirement that we must provide a representative or the youth membership organization with the opportunity to come into our buildings and provide oral or written information to our students. They do have to have, the individual would have to have a criminal history check done, and based upon that criminal history check, we would decide if that person could be the one to come in. But what, there is a list of patriotic youth membership organizations, and it is groups like the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts are the ones that are on that list. So again, patriotic youth membership organizations, I think, can take the mind in a lot of places, particularly right now with maybe the way that things have popped up, but it is a list that, of groups that we have been letting into our buildings and in one way or another, sharing information with our students. But again, sometimes, basically all the time, legislation is written or rewritten based upon specific situations, and there are schools that have not allowed the Boy Scouts, for example, to come into their buildings and share information, and so a legislator decided that there was going to be legislation that would require certain organizations to be able to come into our buildings. Yeah, so I guess that, whatever number of policies that is, Dr. Shedd, we have exhausted them, but certainly will take additional questions at this point.
Sure. Are there other questions that you all have as you went through?
It did occur to me, it would be great if the appropriate vehicles change would actually save us some money, maybe cut down on our use of the giant buses, and instead add to a fleet of other kinds of vehicles. Would that make a big change for us?
I'll defer to Dr. Bozeman, but one of the intents of that legislation was to make it easier for school corporations and not to have to use larger vehicles to transport a very small number of students. And so when you think about our C4 program, for example, if we typically have a decent number going back and forth, but if we had five kids leaving a class to go from north to east, we would not have to go send them in a school bus, we could find another appropriate vehicle to do that. And the key to that, an additional cost key, would be if you're driving a school bus, that takes a licensed bus driver to do that, not just maybe me, that could transport somebody in an appropriate vehicle. I don't know right now with what we have, Dr. Bozeman, if we would see a significant change as we take this policy and actually implement it now that it becomes in place, but...
Probably, probably not, definitely, but that's a good example of how to utilize that. There is additional policy that states when we pick up students from the door, they have to be in a school bus, not even in that typical bus, the next school bus, so this would help us, like, maybe have to, yeah, seriously, probably not.
Yeah, and key on that is, a school bus has a bunch of extra safety things, and if a school bus is stopping on State Road 46 with its stop arm out, that's a much safer situation than us transporting a student in an appropriate vehicle to the door of their house, but this does allow for some back and forth within the system.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question. Any others? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Again, that will serve as the first reading. We'll bring these policies back on February... Now that you've had maybe some of your questions answered, if you go back to that policy, have another thought, please let me know, or if you have a suggestion for revision still to those policies, we can rewrite, change, modify, up until February 8, when we ask for the vote again.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So next is our opportunity for board commendations, and I wondered if colleagues had any to share. I did want to share just for the, that it is a part of a board meeting, just to honor the two BCSC students who have been named as Lilly Scholars. They are Haley Barr and JD Miller, both who are at Columbus Signature New Tech, and that is an awesome opportunity for both of them, so we're quite proud. I do want to share that we had finalists as well, and they are to be commended for being recognized in that way. Maren Weinike, Taylor Holland, Josie Burbrink, Gabriella Heredia, Brock Burbrink, Emily Martin, and Helena Ho were also finalists for the Lilly Endowment Scholarship, but congratulations to Ms. Barr and Ms. Miller. Any others?
Yes. To Columbus East Girls Basketball Team, finishing first in their conference.
Their conference.
Seven and oh.
Yes, undefeated.
So congratulations to those young ladies.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I've got one, one quick one as well.
Sure.
The past few months, I've spent a fair amount of time on the BCSC website, and I would just like to compliment all the people who have anything to do with constructing that website. I mean, it's incredibly thorough, it's easy for even a non-techy like me to navigate, and it's just got, you know, anything that I had tried to kind of look up, I was able to get there pretty easily, and it's just, you know, very well designed, and, you know, compared to a lot of other corporation websites that I've seen, it's outstanding.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you for that, Mr. Grimes. I'll give credit to Josh Burnett back here in the corner, who spent a lot of time working on that, as well as, of course, our technology team and all the pieces that go into getting that up and running, and then there's a lot that has to keep going on to keep it up to date, right? So, yeah, I appreciate that, that's a good testimonial, because the, Josh, when was that change made, a year ago? About a year ago? And the intent was just to make it a much more usable, user-friendly site, so thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. Are there others? All right, the opportunity for school board member reports, are there any? Lucky guys, I've got two I wanted to share. On the 15th, so another, a Friday, I got to attend my first business advisory board meeting, which was fascinating and great fun. I want to share a thanks that was mentioned in that meeting. We had several community partners offer computers for our new IT pathway, that is at Columbus Signature New Tech in partnership with Ivy Tech. So analytic engineering, the city of Columbus, SIHO, offered a variety of laptops and desktops for our students to tear apart and put back together. So I thought that was very nice, and I wanted to share that more publicly. Dr. Roberts, you know, did a great job of providing the COVID update, which we all knew. There were great questions as well from the members. And we also shared a brief summary of legislative priorities for our corporation, just to let our business advisory group know what was important to us, as they might be listening and talking to various legislators. And then I got to hear about the C4 presentation, and that's why we all got to hear about it. So that was for that meeting. The other thing I wanted to share is that as our legislative liaison, I received an update this morning from ISBA, and there are two bills that we are being asked to monitor, perhaps to oppose. The first one is Senate Bill 55 about school referenda. The details of this have to do with school board authority for any compensation provision for superintendents that might be tied to passage of a referendum. If a school board wanted to offer a bonus, like we pulled it off, it tells us, no, you can't. So that's Senate Bill 55. Senate Bill 124 is about the first day of school. The author is Senator Dennis Cruz of all people, and this bill would prohibit public schools from beginning the school year prior to Labor Day, beginning in 2022, 2023. So our association, the Indiana School Board Association, is in opposition to these two bills. So if you're interested, you can let your local representatives know. I'm more than happy to share additional information as to whom to send that. My only commentary is those who love local control seem to not like it when we have it as a school board. Just an observation of mine. All right, any other member reports? Here we go, cabinet reports. It is our opportunity for a Technology Department annual update from Dr. Bozeman and Ms. Nick Williams.
Before Dr. Bozeman starts there, just a second, since we, and my mistake, Dr. Shedd, but Kathy, did you have anything in terms of any reports or commendations or anything? As I'm maneuvering the screen here, sometimes I'm hiding you from view, and so just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to comment if you had something.
You're on mute, Kathy.
Kathy, unmute, go ahead and unmute. There you go.
There, keeping you ready now. Yes, I don't have any items to report tonight, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I didn't leave you out there. Okay. All right.
Good evening, I'm gonna, I'll be brief, just to introduce Nick quickly. Each quarter, one of our operations departments likes to give an annual update to you, so food service and technology each quarter of the year, so Nick will speak tonight, and I'll mention a couple of things of Nick and his department, because he will pass the credit to his people quickly, but technology, as you well know, is one of those departments that is ever-evolving and ever-changing, and especially with our challenges with the pandemic, and me calling Nick and saying, hey, we're going to go to e-learning in a week, and he says, okay, and say, hey, we need, we've got a lot of kids that don't have connectivity, we need hotspots, and he says, okay, and managing longer-term upgrades we've had with Wi-Fi updates in the elementary buildings during the whole time, and maintaining the high level of achievement that we have with ed tech instruction, the classrooms as we navigate through this. So I just want to acknowledge that publicly with you all, appreciate the time, because I know Nick is very humble, and he will pass his credit off to all of his folks, which he should, but it's much to his credit as well. So I'll let Nick give you his annual update and talk about what's going on in the Technology Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick, are you going to use the clicker? You want me to?
I got it.
Okay.
All right, well, first off, thank you guys for having us give this opportunity to update you annually on the Technology Department. Without Dr. Bozeman's support, cabinet support, and your support, we would not be in the situation that we've been fortunate enough to be in this past year, fortunately for our staff, students, and families that we serve. Give a lot of credit to my team, because they do a tremendous job. They would typically be here tonight, but under the circumstances, I had them stay home, and they're probably watching on YouTube right now, so being able to do that is nice as well. So we have three wings in our Technology Department. The first one is operations, and that's led by Eva Cagwin down in the bottom right, and that is anywhere from the telephones, to devices, to classroom AV, anything that really plugs in, and much more, including our network. So Eva's team is the largest team, and she takes on a lot of responsibility. The next one is Mr. Trivet. He's been with us for several years, and they run essentially every system. We have over 60 systems, and this is from people timing in, to get paid, to the buses, to food service, to curriculum resources, and they have to handle all of the state and national reports. So that is a team that has been under the gun quite a bit with schedule changes, things like that. And then the last one is our education wing, and that is led by Brenny. She is in charge of the learning management system and professional development for ed tech for our staff, and then as well as resource adoptions, which they just started. So very hard-working team, and team is very much of what they are part of. So our infrastructure, which has allowed us, again, to, I think, set us up for success before the pandemic, and then also kind of through some of the work here, we, almost all of our decisions are tied to universal design for learning, so we look at what gives students options and invest in that way, and what... we look at what gives students options and invest in that way, and what breaks down barriers for learning. So we are a one-to-one district, first grade through 12th, with Chromebooks and laptops, and we do have devices pretty much in the hands of almost everyone. We, as Dr. Bozeman mentioned, have been able to update with E-Rate, which we had the hearing for earlier, in all of our educational buildings, and that is to the most updated standard of Wi-Fi, which hopefully will carry us for many years forward. And we also have invested in cybersecurity heavily, and we actually have a 24/7, 365-monitored network with a partner vendor who kind of helps us really deal with any negativity that could come towards that aspect. And then we have one learning management system as well, which is, it's learning. All of our staff and students log into that daily and have been heavily since March. All right, so each year, I'm gonna share a story with you about kind of how we've changed this year. Of course, will be about the pandemic. I feel that we have done the best job that we've been able to do. A lot of that comes from teamwork and collaboration. So our department has had, you know, obviously some that have been out for close contacts. We have also had some retire, and we have a changing schedule all the time with the district not really knowing what to expect next. And all of that has been, all of our staff has been extremely flexible in handling those changes or stepping up when we need them to. We've had staff stay after to get a device for a family that works all day, and it'll be after our typical hours. We've had staff deliver devices or hotspots to families' homes who can't make it in, worked with ELL Department, Special Ed Department, really throughout this pandemic to kind of make the best of the situation as we can. And we are included, which is, again, very thankful for, in almost all BCSC decisions at some point, so we know what's coming. We also have vital relationships with our vendors. One example is Verizon with those hotspots. We ordered them in March, just before everyone started ordering them. But our rep actually went into Verizon stores that were since closed to get hotspots for us, shipped to us quickly so that we could get them to our students. So we had vendors going above and beyond as well to help us work through this pandemic. And then because this is all new, nobody really knows kind of what's coming next, we work with partners around the state. So all of our technology leaders are involved in some aspect with other peers. That's just kind of a list of some of them that we're involved with. All right, so then, how does it change our work in supporting in-person, Bridge, CBP, hybrid, and e-learning? I think we had a taste of e-learning a few years ago, where we've had kind of, again, that structure to support. We just haven't done it for nine weeks, and now for another couple of months, all e-learning plus everything else. So the call center has really been valuable for our families at home, and we continue to run that and have run that since March. Virtual meetings, like we're running a Zoom right now, that was, you know, just kind of here and there before the pandemic. Now it's really an expectation to do that everywhere and with our students and helping support learning. Our students, some students are on almost every day a Google Meet and staff on Zoom accounts. So learning those interfaces and a lot of help with Josh included, trying to figure out the ins and outs of that. And then communication has been vital. We had an issue with a local network at one school in the morning, and it's to the point where we were e-learning at that point. Do we tell staff to delay? Everything is somewhat very urgent. So we've created status pages that parents and families can check to see what systems are up or if any are having issues, send text alerts. And then we've had a few bugs here and there that have required fixes, and we kind of communicate those through our website as well. And connectivity is the biggest barrier, I feel, for our families at home. This is not only socioeconomic, but also geographic. So we have, early on, we kind of pointed our Wi-Fi units to go out into parking lots. So we actually had families in the spring that would get lunch and then sit in the parking lots to work on work while they were there because their internet at home was nonexistent or poor. And then at this point, we've distributed over 400 hotspots that we have to manage. So you can see the map down there of where they're distributed throughout the county. So that southwest corner is the biggest need around Mount Helfie, and we're now working with the county and state to hopefully try to see improvements throughout the county in future years. And then everything is really hard to get. So we still are waiting on devices from our spring orders for this year. Usually they come in over the summer. They've been just rolling in when we've been able to get them in shipments. So we are, have dealt with kind of, as soon as one's needs repair, we get it fixed right away, and we have a good team that helps with that. All right, and then the last one is professional development. I think one of the first ones that we realized was going to be virtual was the UDL Institute. So Rhonda Tina, Dr. Van Horn and his team really kind of pushed us today, let's do this. So we did an all kind of virtual UDL Institute, and since then, we have been doing almost all professional development virtually. It's been nice to be able to continue to offer that monthly. We've expanded to more support staff, and it's easy to record and just post up so that if you do miss it, then you can catch it later. So we've had an increase in participation in any kind of ed tech professional development throughout the district. All right, what questions may you have?
Wow. Do you have particular questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Lots of newbie questions again, Nick, okay. What does a device lifecycle look like in the school system? So do you have, do you have a two-year cycle, a three-year cycle? Is it fixes fail? What is the?
It is a four-year cycle. So every first grader, fifth grader, and ninth grader gets a new device, and it'll follow them regardless of what school they go to until the end of those four years. So we're buying for three grade levels every spring.
Okay, okay, good. And I know you know this, I'm a parent of a middle schooler, and I have to commend your team for, she hasn't had a single problem. And I'm sure you get feedback from the, from the people that do, but it's just been a really seamless process for, for me and my family. So really great job because that can't have been easy. And then one more question, and it's a little maybe out there, but, you know, the pandemic has taught us all so much about technology. My mom can do things today that she could not have done six months ago, okay? And we all have, right? We've all gotten more accustomed to just these things to replace some, some of the in-person stuff. How does you and, how do you and your team think about when we get back to not the new normal, but like normal, normal? What are some things that you think will carry with us through kind of this last year of experiences? Are there any, any aha moments? Do you guys feel like you've had that, that might change, change normal, normal going forward?
I think the, the flexibility that this district has offered to our parents, I think, has, has opened doors to how we look at what education may look like in terms of the virtual options for elementary and secondary students. So I think those offerings for our students, we anticipate to continue. And then our staff, again, we, our use of a learning management system was high before the pandemic hit, and it has just taken our staff to another level in terms of what they're doing and how they're teaching online. And I couldn't be more kind of proud to see it. You don't, you have to search it a little bit, in my position, and we've searched for stories on kind of the excellent things that teachers are doing. But I think just that continued use of being able to have content anywhere, anytime. So if a student is out for whatever reason, they will continue to have high-quality instruction, and that could be, you know, anywhere from college visits to maybe an extended outage because of a hospital need or a medical need. So I, I think that will continue us forward and just show that we can learn anytime, anywhere.
Thank you. Mrs. Denner?
In the partnership slide, you mentioned the Bartholomew County Broadband Initiative. And then a couple of slides later, you had the map of all the Wi-Fi hotspots that are needed. Is the Broadband Initiative that the county is undertaking, will, will help some of our students?
Yes. I don't think one answer is going to answer all of the issues that our families have, but we do have areas of the county that it is, it's just really expensive to bury fiber and get out there. And really, if you're a company, it's not worth it if you're just taking it to one house. So the state and the, and nationally are providing more funding to help families that may be in those situations get fiber built out to them, and then they have more options. So I do think it will improve it, but it will just take time.
Thank you.
Very good. Are there other questions y'all have? I was, I was thinking similar to Nikki. I was, I'm curious, and maybe you don't want to answer this now, but I'm curious with this experience, if there are particular recommendations that you will either have for leadership or have for us to think differently about now that we know our potential or capacity or technology issues, you know, just, I think it'll be very interesting for all of us just to rethink, well, we don't have to do it that way anymore. I mean, just even the C4 presentation. I mean, I know Gene loves to go meet everybody, but he is got, you're just going to be exposed to so many more people with the presentation that he offered earlier. So I'm just curious if you've got this like list in your head, like, I'm gonna be sure that we talk about doing this in the future.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've already actually started meeting about what do our virtual options look like next year. But things like, I mean, even as Josh has set up some of the live streaming for athletic events, to, you know, having this accessible to everyone, it's possible. We have the infrastructure to do it, and we're seeing increased engagement in our community when we do do it. So I think, I think, yes, there's lots of possibilities there to further engage our stakeholders and let them be a part of us and let us share our story in a more unique way.
Nice. Well, that'll, we can look forward to that. All right, other questions? Thank you very much. Thank your team as well.
Thank you, Nick.
All right, Dr. Roberts.
Right, hard to follow that. Great presentation, good information. Thank you again, Mr. Williams, but we'll jump into the business part of the meeting, and I'm going to ask for approval for a few items here. Included in those items, minutes of the regular school board meeting from January 11th, our last one, supplemental contracts. There's a list of different things that we have paid some teachers for, and also have, typically there are field trips slash professional leaves and/or school fundraisers, but there are no requests this time, so you did not have any of those in your packet. I am asking that you approve a resolution to continue leave related to FFCRA, which is the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and asking that we can, that we receive permission to receive or ask for food service bids. It's that time of year where we'll solicit vendors and get bids from them so that we can look at next year's food costs. The FFCRA, so real quick on that resolution before I turn it over to you for consideration. It, the act itself expired, the provisions of the act expire on December 31st, were not continued by the federal government. We believe it is important to continue to recognize at least a portion of that act. And specifically, we're looking at an individual, one of our staff members, any of our staff members, who is, is having to be home because basically we've told them, they have to be home. They are displaying symptoms related or like COVID-19, or they have tested positive for COVID-19, or we've identified them, or maybe they've been identified somewhere else, but has a close contact, identified as a close contact and must stay home for a few days. So with the FFCRA, we continue to pay those individuals for the days they are not here, and they do not have to utilize their sick days, personal days, whatever other paid time off, PTO they might have. And that was the way it was for the entire first part of our school year because of FFCRA, and we are extending that through at least the end of the third quarter. So this resolution takes it through the end of the third quarter based upon circumstances. When we get to spring break or that timeframe, we'll review this again. I might bring you another resolution to extend it further based upon circumstances. But we'll see what the circumstances are. Let's, let's hope that things get better and more shots are in the arms and all that kind of stuff are happening. But when I mentioned the specific part of FFCRA that we were covering and listed those things, there is a piece about FMLA that's related to if I am caring for somebody and I stay home for that reason, somebody that is having to stay home because of COVID-19, and I'm going to also stay home and take care of that person, we did not extend that particular part of FFCRA. We feel like we are able to, with our current dollars, to take care of individuals, again, having to stay home because of their situation related to COVID-19, but not then another person's situation with COVID-19. So this resolution specifically addressed those pieces I outlined, and I would ask for you to approve that. It is retroactive to January 1st or the beginning of this semester. So if we've had somebody already out, and we have, because of those reasons, we will be able to continue paying them and not take days away from them.
All righty.
Before I move on, I guess I did have, I jumped on that one too quickly, Dr. Shedd.
Oh, all right.
We do have, literally, the claims for January 25th, total a little over $600,000 payroll for January 15th. That was about two and a half million dollars. That was a regular payroll that covered the dates of December 28th through January 8th. And when we have two meetings in a month, we just have less claims. So if you remember the last time, we had more money and an extra set of claims in there. So a little bit less for this time. So those are the items I have, letters A through G for you.
All right. If I could, I'd entertain a motion for approval of items 5A through G as they've been presented to us.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Graves. Are there particular questions of Dr. Roberts for any of these items? Will you check on Kathy for me, please?
Yep, thank you. Appreciate that reminder. All right, Kathy, you've heard the question. I think Dr. Shedd, anything else to add or questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
You might go ahead and unmute yourself, Kathy, for the purposes of the vote.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I do have one quick question regarding F, the FF.
CRA.
CRA, yes. Was the original act, I noticed in this one, it says 10 workdays rather than 80 hours?
Yeah, it, it was, it was 10, 10 workdays up to 80 hours. The intent of the legislation was to pay you for the day that you worked. You know, so a person who works seven hours a day, you're going to get paid for that seven hours a day, four hours a day, four, whatever the case might be, recognizing that eight hours is maybe the typical or understood 40-hour work week. So it covered that time, but it was my workday. We wanted to make sure and clarify that here and stay away from the 80 hours, which is a possibility if that's your workday, eight hours a day, but make sure it was understood it's 10 workdays. Yep, good question.
All right, there are no other questions. I'll call the vote. Those who approve items 5A through G as presented to us, if you'd signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? There you go.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Heine, your turn.
Thank you, Dr. Shedd. I'm requesting recommendations as presented.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. DeHoff-Dwyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wieldon. Any questions of Ms. Heine? All right. All those in favor of the human resources recommendations as presented to us, if you'd signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, there you go. Thank you, Ms. Heine. The side input or review, any comments, questions you'd like to share after hearing such a rich, exciting meeting? It really was.
Lot of stuff.
Mr. Graves, anything? All right, Ms. Wieldon? All right, Ms. Wieldon?
No, I'm, I'm, I will be at your virtual event. I'm really excited about the C four program. Thank you very much. I want to go out to me.
Go ahead, go ahead. Mrs. Stenner?
I've been thinking about Mr. Bryant's question about the East team and the role of athletics in our community. And I'm so glad that we're able to, and this is technology related as well, that we're able to share that with folks in the community who are so used to being a part of those programs and cheering those programs on, to be able to safely participate from home and watch those. And I think it means a lot to people, and I'm glad we've made the effort.
You're here. Thank you. Dr. Bills?
Oh, I do not.
All right, Mr. Bryant?
I don't. I appreciate so much everything that we learned. I'm just so proud of all of us, so thank you very much. Our next school board meeting is we will be here. And as a teaser for how cool it's going to be, we will have our Education Hall of Fame winner announced and a reception at that time. So with that.
Before you give a loud, Dr. Shedd.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, if I just, just on the Education Hall of Fame winner, we have reception up there, but we are still working on what that could and might look like in this day and age. So we'll continue to have dialogue around what we can do to appropriately celebrate. And I think we can publicly state, Kathy, you're on here. Would you want to go ahead and state the education award winner, please?
Yes, it's Mrs. Scott from Columbus North High School.
That's awesome. Kathy is the school board representative that leads that committee, does a great job with that from, from year to year, and so led that group here recently. And Susan Scott, Columbus North Assistant Principal, longtime educator for us, she's outstanding. Glad that we have a chance to recognize her, and we will do that in the best way that we possibly can Monday, February 8th.
All right, thank you. So I told you it'd be a teaser, and you all will be here. Have a safe, safe evening. Thank you very much for being here. I'll call this adjourned.